We forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not to temptation but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Glad to see you all out here on this cold and kind of wintry night. Nice to have everybody here. Item one on the agenda is going to be an announcement by, it says Yvonne Loughlin, but I think it's actually going to be Rick Baye, HEB representative to publicly invite the city commission to the 100th HEB curbside location across Texas event scheduled for December 22nd, 2017 at 9:00 AM at the HEB store, 1103 Morgan Street, Farmington. Is that right? So Rick and you're, and everybody that you want to bring up with your delegation, come on up and tell us about it.
We didn't have to buy dinner.
All right. Thank you. We're off to a good start.
Mayor Boswell, city commissioners, first of all, we want to say thank you for putting us on the agenda this evening and also to publicly invite each and every one of you, as Mayor Boswell said, to our 100th curbside celebration. This is going to be the 100th for the entire company. This is why it's so special. We have 20 dignitaries from HEB, which we're not allowed to say who they're going to be, but at this time, but that are going to be coming down just for this particular event. This is a once-in-a-lifetime event for HEB and we're proud of. This is going to be our 100th store that we've opened in curbside and to have it here in Harlingen is even more special. That's what makes it even more special for us at the Morgan store. I myself am the unit director with Baye and then of course I have Diego, my assistant store director, Deo Garza, and of course George Garcia, which will be leading the curbside team when we open on December the 22nd. So at this time, like we said, I want to publicly invite each and every one of you on December the 22nd at 9:00 AM. We will be having a ribbon cutting. We are going to be having some other events. Mariachi's and everything else has already been scheduled. That's how big we're, this curbside celebration is. And like we said, you know, we're born in Texas and this just makes it a lot more influential for us and to, and for you guys to be a part of this celebration would truly honor us here in Harlingen, but also HEB. So again, you know, thank you for having us here this evening and again, you're more than welcome to attend the celebration on the 22nd.
All right. Well, thank, it sounds like it's going to be an exciting event, so thank you for the invitation and we'll be there.
Awesome. Thank you. Y'all have a great evening.
Item two is presentation by Wayne Lowery, the executive director for Habitat for Humanity regarding the Brush Up Harlingen program. Wayne?
Thank you, Mayor and city commissioner, Dan and staff. I did not bring cookies, but I am bringing good news.
Would you like a, would you like a cookie?
They told me if I cross this line, they're going to tackle me, so I'm going to stand right here. So I, I am here to, to talk a little bit about some good news on a project that's, that's been in Dan's mind, Mr. Serna's mind for some time and we're very, very thrilled to announce a joint effort, a partnership between Habitat for Humanity, Keep Harlingen Beautiful and of course the City of Harlingen, and that is Brush Up Harlingen. And with me, I want to recognize Mr. Ford Kinsley, who is the board president for Keep Harlingen Beautiful and I also have some of my staff, Phoebe Sepeta, formerly of the Harlingen Chamber, now our director of development, and Eribeto Orta, who is our program director. And so I want to talk a little bit about the program and then Ford's going to say a few words as well. So Brush Up Harlingen is a, is a program that was initiated in Victoria from a sister affiliate and they so graciously allowed us to take on that name and, and bring this program to the valley. So Brush Up Harlingen is our new initiative, the first of our, of its kind in the valley. Phase one will address five homes in a designated area by the city of Harlingen for beautification. Now, the goal is that we're budgeting $1,500 per house, so it's going to be exterior work only. It's going to be painting, also replacing rotten trim, so very much a beautification, home preservation type initiative. Recipients must qualify for the program. Also want to recognize Tammy Jackson, who works really closely with us and helps us in, in this process as well, identifying and qualifying the family. We're going to have an event date. It's going to be scheduled between January 15th and March 15th. We're still pending a few steps along the way as far as qualifying families before we're able to set a exact date for that event. But what we're looking at is a blitz-type event where we're, we're expecting 50 to 100 people of the community to come together. There will be trash pickup. There'll be beautification. We're going to take a very specific designated area for us to work in. So I want to talk a little bit about the roles and responsibility from each organization. First off, Habitat for Humanity will cover all the insurance and liability concerns. Of course, we provide volunteer liability waivers for those that want to volunteer with Habitat for Humanity. We will do the marketing for Brush Up Harlingen, including our Facebook campaigns and all other community events. Of course partnering with our other partners to get the word out. We'll also screen, identify and qualify potential Brush Up Harlingen recipients from home-owned and occupied by families within the designated program area. So that again, this is not for situations where there's tenants and a landlord. We're not trying to assist a landlord, but these are owner-occupied dwellings where we're going to put this, these resources into. Habitat will also oversee all construction-related activities, including any prep work needed prior to the event date. Habitat will provide safety instruction, training and supervision on the job site. We will also provide the tools, paint, paintbrushes, bug spray, sunscreen, gloves, safety glasses, and other construction supplies on the job site. Again, as, as many of you know Habitat, we build new houses. We do our Aging in Place program. This is a next logical step. We have a lot of that material already in our possession, so it'll be easy for us to transition and use a lot of the same resources. We'll also be responsible for all procurement and payment. If there happens to be any subcontractors, although we don't expect any in this phase, we will take on that responsibility as well. And in addition to that, we will start promoting the Harlingen Recycling Center, which is the driving funding source for this project. So we were going to promote the recycling center with a minimum of two Facebook posts per month to help try to drive revenue. In addition to that, although it's on the PowerPoint, we are in our new facility on First Street, once it's opened, we are going to have a additional recycling drop-off area that we are designating in that spot and then we're going to transport that to kind of take that burden off of the, off the responsibility from the, the city's department. We're going to transport that on a daily or bi-daily basis to the recycling center. We expect having that additional drop-off spot with additional hours will allow people from that side of town to more easily and, and more frequently contribute towards the recycling center. So a little bit more, I will read this and then let Ford talk about this, unless you want to cover this. Do you want to cover this, Ford?
Sure.
All right.
Again, good evening. Thank you for having us here. Keep Harlingen Beautiful is excited to be a part of this and Mr. Serna called us in to give us his, his vision of this. It was a, something that falls right in with the mission of what Keep Harlingen Beautiful is and we were going to fund this project to the tune of $9,000 so that Wayne has the necessary funds to get this going. Obviously, we'll be providing a lot of the grunt labor for this. Wayne has his dedicated volunteers already, but the kind folks at TSTC and my little workforce out there at Marine Military Academy will always be available to assist in, in these projects here and we'll keep track and monitor and evaluate their participation. Marketing, as, as Wayne said, also on the Keep Harlingen Beautiful websites and Facebook pages, ads in the paper, things of that nature. And we'll work with code compliance to make sure that all this stuff, hopefully this will be done as, as part of a neighborhood clean sweep program as well when we're in that area, so we'll be able to work with them on getting all the trash removed at the end of it, so it's not laying there in the street.
And so to talk a little bit about, that's a little bit about phase one. Phase two, we see this as a developing relationship and partnership. We hope to leverage the funds that are coming in from Keep Harlingen Beautiful via the recycling center and we hope to leverage those funds to get more buy-in from the community, both in private donors, corporate donors and so forth, so that the $9,000 contribution to get this started will be matched by other supporters. We do hope this, I mean, this project's going to be for the first quarter. We do hope that it's successful and that we're able to continue to grow this project with additional buy-in. But part of phase two is we recognize that there are going to be additional needs, even in this designated area, that, that this project, this program won't be able to satisfy. So we have reached out and have different partners that we're, we've already reached out to, to assist us in additional parts of this project. So one of those is kind of an internal referral and that is to our Aging in Place program, Habitat's Aging in Place program. We do have funding source through United Way that we will have access to separate and apart from the Brush Up Harlingen. So if we get into a situation where it's a senior that's eligible and we need to add a rail or, or build a ramp, we can do that with our assist, additional funds through Aging in Place. We also, Ms. Tammy and I met with the Community Action Corporation of South Texas, who does weatherization and they are very interested in our referrals for weatherization, so they've agreed to partner with us on that. And if we get into a situation where they need a new roof or need some other critical home repairs, although phase one, we're not aiming to tackle those, we are being mindful of that, that need. And again, we're trying to have a high impact across a block or multiple homes in one area to try to inspire and encourage that entire area to lift themselves up. And so Brush Up Harlingen is about lifting up and then steaming and empowering an impoverished part of our community to give them a sense of pride of homeownership and to help them maintain the great resource that a home is. So that's what we have. Any questions by the, the commissioner or mayor?
Anybody have any questions? I think this is a great, great initiative and a great partnership as we have gone into neighborhoods over the last few years and tore down dilapidated buildings and structures that are crime magnets and graffiti magnets. And as you have come back into those neighborhoods with Habitat for Humanity and built new homes, this is a way that we can continue the effort of, of really trying to improve the look of the neighborhoods. And I think it's a great idea. Congratulations to the staff and you all for bringing, making this idea come to life and become a reality. So I look forward to getting started.
Thank you.
All right. Item three is a presentation by the Harlingen Police Department Executive Staff and district representatives to present recognition flags to sponsors of the annual Run with the Heroes. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, thank you very much for having us. It's hard to believe this is our third year of the Run with the Heroes RGV, 2017 year. And we've come this morning, we didn't bring cookies either, but we brought a lot of money to give away to four great charities. And so I'd like to, if I could ask the mayor and the commissioners to gather with our sponsors in the front. We'll take a quick group photo, but this event doesn't happen on its own. And when I got here in 2015, I reached out to June and Edith Eliadmo, who have done a tremendous job of helping us organize this event and it went from a couple of hundred folks to consistently now over the last couple of years, seven, eight hundred runners and one of the biggest 5Ks in the, in South Texas. And we've consistently raised a great deal of money from our generous community and our sponsors. So I'm going to call our sponsors out and those that are here, if you can come up front and receive your plaque. Oil Patch Fuel and Supply, Zenith Lawyer Keller Williams, South Texas Emergency Care, Burt Ogden Hyundai, Briggs Coleman, Harlingen Medical Center, LNF Distributors, Avent Water Stations, Palms Behavioral Center, Toyota of Beeville, oh Brownsville, I'm sorry. A little farther south. Trinity, Charlie Clark Nissan, Supreme Mortgage, Target Stores, Texas Regional Bank, Bonham Realty of Cali de la Garza, All About Kids Home Health, Stericycle, RGV CU, La Vaquita, Veranda, Valley Federal Credit Union, Crunch Fitness, Burke Dental, UniFirst, Watermill Express, and China Restaurant, as well as Footworks and the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, who's been out there every year with us. Their symphony along the route, as well as a couple of drum lines to add live music. A little bit of Keep Harlingen Weird on the run for us. And I want to thank South Texas Emergency Care and the Harlingen Fire Department, who have done a tremendous job partnering with us and putting on a great event. Can we get a picture with you, mayor and commissioners, city manager? So this year's totals, I'm pretty excited. It's the most money we've been able to give away so far in the last three years. Our four charities, Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Awareness is receiving $2,500. Since we were so blessed and fortunate this year to dodge Hurricane Harvey, we felt compelled to add a charity. We normally do three, but we added for Hurricane Harvey Relief American Red Cross for $2,500. Special Olympics, South Texas RGV, $2,500. And our very own City of Harlingen Humane Society, $7,500. So for a total of $15,000 this year, so we can give our sponsors a great big round of applause. We've got one special presentation, mayor, and that's to Briggs, who has been a platinum sponsor for the last three years, contributing $5,000 every year to the run and our charities. So we've got a special display case and presentation to them, so.
All right. Well, congratulations to HPD and, and all the sponsors of this great event. Chief, thank, thank you so much for that presentation and, and for continuing to organize this event. You know, I walked with the heroes. I cheated a little bit. I started from the front door of my house. And so I kind of, I got to kind of break it up into two segments and I still had to walk home. Nobody gave me a ride, so I did the whole course. All right. Well, congratulations. We look forward to doing that again next year. It's been a great, great benefit to these worthy charities. So thanks to all who participated. Now we've got a presentation number, number four, a report from the internal auditor. Danny Coyle.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Serna, good evening. It's going to be hard to be as uplifting as the last few presentations, but I'll do my best. I have, I have a handout. Should I bring this up or? Back and forth. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Well, two years. So again, Mayor Boswell, Commissioners, Mr. Serna, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to report the activities and accomplishments of your internal audit department for the last two years. Danny Coyle, internal auditor. By way of introduction, every organization has goals and objectives that it works to achieve. And in pursuit of the objectives, the organization will encounter events and circumstances that may threaten the achievement of those objectives. So by way of introduction and in perspective, I have prepared the following to illustrate the city's response to the possible risks and threats to the city's goals and objectives. These are the responses that are in place today and activities that have occurred in the past that lead to where we are today. So in, in, in June of 2006, the city established a code of ethics requiring city officials and employees to be independent, impartial, and responsible to the, to the citizens. Or is it this one here? Okay, sorry. There we go. I guess I'm not pointing in the right direction. Your efforts to serve, to set the tone at the top for good government and accountability and transparency. In 2008, the city established by ordinance the procedures for the appointment of the internal auditor. And the ordinance established qualifications, duties, and responsibilities of the position. In June of that same year, the powers, qualifications, and responsibilities of the audit committee were established. City Charter establishes senior management's responsibility for the selection, development, and evaluation of internal controls to achieve the objectives of the organization. Each group within the lines of defense should have clearly defined roles and responsibilities that are supported by appropriate policies, procedures, and reporting mechanisms. Internal audit provides response to senior management and the governing body on the adequacy of government, governance, risk, and controls. Internal audit should include within its scope all of the organization's significant risks and control activities. Over the last two years, in total, internal audit is focused primarily on the city's cash handling activities at the request of the audit committee. And all performance audits are conducted in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards established by the Government Accountability Office. Those professional standards are the same that the external auditors follow in offering their opinion on the financial statements that are included within the comprehensive annual report filed annually. In all matters relating to the audit work, the audit organizational and the internal auditor must be independent. The standards establish requirements for due care and conducting audits, including adequate planning, identifying appropriate criteria, evidence, and the proper reporting. The sta, the standards establish requirements for due care and conducting audits, including the standards that must meet certain continuing professional education requirements. And finally, third-party assurance of the internal auditor's quality control program is required under the standards. City policy also requires follow-up audits, recup to the recommendations to which management has committed in the, in its management responses. So since joining the city in, in 2015, internal audit has issued seven performance audits, one agreed upon procedures review, and two required follow-up audits. In fiscal 2016, internal audit completed four performance audits. I'm just no good at this. And one agreed procedures review, the agreed upon procedure review was requested by the finance director and the municipal court administrator. In fiscal 2017, internal audit concluded three performance audits. These are here. And two required follow-up reviews. The audit projects in green will be presented to the audit committee next month for review and approval of the fiscal 2018 audit work plan. The governing body, the audit committee and management may also request an audit project. So summary of recommendations. From the seven performance audits issued, internal audit made 89 recommendations to improve internal controls, efficiency, or program effectiveness. Examples of the recommendations include developing or strengthening internal policies and working instructions specific to department operations relative to the risk of achieving its goals. Improving safeguard over city assets and personnel, strengthening user access over enterprise software applications, aligning fees and charges with city ordinances, and agreeing sub-ledger activity within the enterprise software to the city's general ledger. City administration agreed with 96% of the recommendations and committed to implementing policies, working instructions, and processes to strengthen internal controls and to improve efficiencies and effectiveness. So at the end of the last two fiscal years, the audit committee, senior management, and the external auditor participated in an evaluation of the internal auditor. An annual evaluation is recommended by the Institute of Internal Auditors as a professional best practice. Respondents were asked to evaluate the internal auditor based on the following evaluation criteria. Compliance with the internal audit charter and planned level of performance or the annual audit plan's overall comprehensiveness of the audit plan with, in relationship to the strategic objectives of the city, the delivery of timely internal audit services, and the competency of the internal auditor. The results of the, of the evaluation indicate improvement in the evaluation from administration and the external auditor, and also improvement in the, from the audit committee from the prior year. So what's next? I'm going to click the right button. The internal audit maturity model describes five levels of internal audit activity in accordance with its set of capabilities. At the lowest levels, levels one and two, right there and there, these are the levels, these are the capabilities, these are all the processes, services provided. They're characterized by the absence of infrastructure, lack of adherence to established professional practices, impartial compliance with the professional standards and audit planning based on management priorities. On the higher levels, three, four, and five, the capabilities are characterized by compliance with the professional standards, focus on independence and objectivity, documentation of audit processes, policies and procedures, and an established quality assurance and improvement program. Level four and five, internal audit function works closely with the organization's governance and management to develop annual risk-based plans that aim to address risk to the entire entity's goals and objectives. My assessment of the department's level of maturity model is illustrated on the, on the screen. With your support and continued internal audit efforts, my goal will be to achieve greater maturity for the department and effectiveness and efficiency for the city and its citizens. So, in conclusion, the last two years covered by this presentation have been productive and challenging and rewarding. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the audit committee and the city commissioners for your support. And I also am very appreciative to Mr. Serenagh for his support and the cooperation of his staff over the last two years. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
You, you want a cookie?
I think I'm gonna need one.
Danny, for the benefit of the public, why don't you just read off from your page there the departments that have been audited in 2016 and 2017?
Yes, sir.
Starting with the municipal court and all those.
Yes, sir. Read them off?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, from?
From here.
The graph, Dan.
The graph.
Oh, okay.
That one. Got the municipal court.
That's right. Municipal Court, Public Works, the Way Station Operations, the Harlan Gin Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Tony Butler Golf Course, were the performance audits. The municipal court special project was related to a agreed upon procedure for time payment fees. In fiscal 2017, Internal Audit issued reports regarding cash handling for the Harlan Gin Public Library, Police Grant Management, Planning and Development Department, and completed two follow-up audits for the municipal court and the Harlan Gin Visitors and Visitors Bureau.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Danny? I think those of us who are on the audit committee get to, get to see what's going on on a quarterly basis, because we meet on a quarterly basis. And I think it's a great idea to bring Danny to our meeting with the public and let him explain some of the things that he's doing. And also, for folks who are not familiar with his position, the, the internal auditor position also reports directly to the city commission. But I think what's really made this the last two years work so well is because of the excellent cooperation between our city administration, the city manager, and, and the internal auditor to get so much done, really, in two years and to bring this sort of methodical check and balance to our operation that while we have a great team of external auditors, we really need this function to work as it's working. And I'm real pleased and proud of the work that's being done. And so I'm, I think everybody involved in this process should be congratulated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll turn next to item number five, which is the status report of the convention center. We'll ask the city manager to tell us about it.
I want to ask Carlos to, to present the report. But before I do, Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to introduce our new Public Works Director, Selena Gonzalez. Selena Gonzalez comes from Los, Los Reslos, where she was the Assistant City Manager for several years, and we were able to take, take her away from Los Reslos. And she, she accepted the position, and she hit the ground running. And she's doing a fantastic job in a very short period of time. So we're happy she's here, and we expect great things from her.
Thank you, Dan and Mayor Carlos. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to be here. I'm honored, I'm excited, and I'm blessed to be here and to be a part of all of this. So, thank you.
All right, welcome to the team. We're glad to have you onboard.
I'm equally ecstatic that she's here. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for this time. In the interest of time, I placed a copy of the PowerPoint presentation on, on your desk there. And so I'm gonna kind of browse through it or fly through it. If you have or need additional information, please feel free to, to stop me and ask, ask that question. I'm here to report on the progress of the construction phase on the convention center. And then Gabe is here to also to report on the, he's been working with a developer on the marketing efforts, too. So, on the construction part of it, I'm, again, happy to report that the contractor has begun. They started moving or turning dirt out on the, on the job site. We have, again, a forty-four thousand-plus square foot facility that's being built. And so the mobilization that's have, that has occurred at this point is, involves the developer clearing the property, removing the trees, the green, pretty much all that green area that's, yeah, that was on that eight acre track. It's pretty much been cleared at this point. There's a lot of over-excavation that's required in, in order to establish a sound foundation for the, for the facility. And so that required them to remove three feet from the existing surface elevation. They were going three feet down, and they're gonna bring it up eight feet. So, it's three feet plus an additional five feet. The finished elevation's gonna be at or above two feet, above the backup curb of the, of the, on the street level. Our plan here is to provide you an update on a monthly basis. And as the project progresses, we're also gonna invite you to visit the site with us. We'll arrange a tour for y'all to, to visit and, and look and have a, a personal feel of, of what's going on out in the job site. Like I said, most of the work that's being done right now is, is, has been excavation, moving dirt. And the contractor, at this point, has started bringing in some of the fill to, again, raise the elevation path for the, for the, for the building itself. Here in this photograph that I, that I'm at is, again, showing the trucks bringing in the, the fill. And it, it, it seems like the progress is kind of slow at this point because, one, there's over thirty-five thousand cubic yards of dirt that are coming in. And they gotta, they gotta compact it on a eight-inch-thick lips. And so we, they, they lay it down, they compact it, we test it, and they, they add another eight inches and so forth. So it's, it's been somewhat of a tedious and slope-moving process. We hope that they, and based on the schedule, that they'll start doing utilities and start working or forming the foundation within the next two to three weeks. In summary, the convention center project, again, the contractor that's onboard is Killian Construction. Their official start date was October the ninth of twenty-seventeen. The amount paid out at this point to the contractor is ninety-five thousand, fifty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. At this point, the level of completion is at two percent. Again, the contract days or the timeline or schedule for this project is, is twelve months, three hundred and sixty-five calendar days. And at this point, there's only been a day and a half of rain delays per se. On the marketing efforts, I'm gonna pass it over to, to Gabe.
Thank you, Carlos. Mayor, members of the commission, city manager. The marketing efforts for the convention center go back to 2016. At the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference, we actually handed out RAC cards for the convention center. It had the preliminary site plan, and just noticed that it was coming in 2018. At 2017, Texas Municipal League Annual Conventions, we actually had the RAC card along with the current site plan that Carlos showed you earlier on that RAC card. Since that time, Brandon has met with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they've been working on the rental rates for the convention center. They've got preliminary rates, and he's gonna make a presentation to the council within thirty days or so on those rates, along with the marketing plan as well. Now, one of the things that we haven't addressed yet, but that's going to have to be addressed sooner or later is the, the back of the house. He's indicated that there will be no outside food that will be allowed into the convention center. So we're gonna have to decide how he's gonna handle that. And he's probably gonna hire a company to actually provide the food products for the convention center, but we haven't addressed that yet. But that's something that's going to be worked on shortly. He also gave us a preliminary marketing plan, but his marketing analyst was here in the valley and was going to visit McAllen, South Pottery, and Brownsville just to compare their convention center to ours. And then with that information, provide a report back to the council on where he wants to be with the rates. So that's what we've been doing so far. We have been active with the marketing, and we plan to be more aggressive once we get the rental rates established. That way, we can actually market it more aggressively to, to planners and promoters. So, if you have any questions you may have about the marketing component.
The rental rates will have to come to city council for approval along with the annual budget, the operating budget for the convention center. So we have been pushing pretty hard to get the rental rates and the marketing plan completed so that we can move on to the budgeting phase. So we, we're making more progress as of late than we had for the past two, three months. We expect him to, Brandon, to be here probably next meeting, either the twentieth or the third, to present what he proposes for rental rates. And then soon after, we'll present, he'll present the budget to propose those.
All right. Very good. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank, thank you for that report. I think this is, appreciate, I think this is a great idea to give, give us in the community periodic update on the convention center and progress. So with that, we go to item six, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November first, 2017. Are there any conditions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is our motion to approve the minutes.
So moved second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Next items are the consent agenda, items seven, eight, through eight. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item A, consideration, possible action on our request of an agreement between the developed corporation, rather than Qualphone Data Services Group. And authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, Rodell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm still smiling.
Somebody go pinch him, let's see.
I'd still open that gift, and I'm just watching and looking at it.
It's Rodell, all smiling.
Unfortunately, not everything is as good news as we had the last couple of days. But, and this is one of those that, not too bad, though. There's some, some hope yet here. Qualphone opened up two and a half years ago and started out gangbusters, hiring a lot of people. They went up to almost three hundred employees. A hundred and forty-seven of those actually qualified under the incentive program that we had with them, whereby we gave them two hundred thousand dollars upfront. And they earned a thousand dollars per job created that met our requirements, which was basically, they have to be there at least nine months, have to be full-time, offering benefits and a certain salary level, which was over nine dollars an hour. So a hundred and forty-seven of those did meet those requirements, and we forgave a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of that two hundred thousand dollar loan. So there was still fifty-three thousand dollars outstanding, which should have been taken care of within the first twenty-four months of operations. Unfortunately, because of their business and the way their business comes and goes sometimes, they laid off some folks, and that didn't happen. However, as the economies go up and down and business goes up and down, they are starting to rehire folks now, and right now, they're up to a hundred and twenty-eight employees. And their projections are that they're gonna continue to hire, probably at a pretty aggressive pace over the next couple of years. What they have asked us to do is basically extend the time necessary to create those two hundred jobs and maintain those two hundred jobs to basically the end of their, of their lease term, which was back in to, extended out to, I'm looking for the date.
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
October thirty-first?
Yeah. Yeah. And so the board, EDC board, looked at it and said, we don't have anything to lose by, by doing that. They're operating right now. They're gonna continue to operate. They've created some jobs, not as many as we wanted initially, but they've created some jobs. And their outlook is positive, so let's go ahead and do it. And back in November, we went ahead and approved it at the, at the board level, but it does require city commission approval as well. Any questions?
So the EDC board has already, has already approved?
Yes, sir.
And recommends the approval of?
And recommended approvals to the city commission as well.
And as they, as they get, as they get contracts for service, and sometimes they lose contracts for service, and then they get new contracts for service, they can, they, they're continuing an operation. They've expanded that, they, they brought that building back alive. It was an empty building, there was nothing. And that building's been a big investment in the building, and they're continuing to utilize the building. And so, all right. Does anybody have any questions? Then we have a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the agreement. Extending the time. So any, any of the other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip, man. Thank you.
Item nine is public hearing and presentation of learning the fiscal years sixteen, seventeen. Consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Good evening, Tammy.
Good evening. Had to get my little instructions. We're required to have a public hearing before we approve the, or submit the plan to HUD. The, what I have for you is just a summary of what if, what we've accomplished during the year. Initially, we have a one-year action plan that's before you. We say we're gonna accomplish these items, and this is a report that we have to submit to HUD based on that. Ideally, what we try to do is, is actually have a positive impact on the low to moderate income population, especially in the, in the neighborhoods. And also through the services that we provide through partnering with the nonprofit organizations. We've had a little bit of a challenge in, in continuing to do that throughout the years, because as you can see, we've had significant cuts to the program. Although we, for 2018, the, the program was proposed to be totally eliminated. It appears as if that's not gonna happen, so we'll be around a little bit longer. The unexpendable balance from last year for projects were eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine eighty-seven and oh four cents. Then we got our sixteen, seventeen entitlement grant. We received fifty-five thousand, five hundred and nineteen and eighty-six cents in program income from that, from the homes that we've assisted in the repayment of those loans that we've provided to them at zero, one, or two percent interest on those loans. And then we expended nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, three ninety-five and thirty-five cents, which, so coming in as of October first, we'll have seven hundred and twenty, two hundred and ten and fifty-five cents to spend on the projects that are for the upcoming year. Provided a chart to give you kind of a cumulative idea of where our expenditures were. We were able to, we spent three hundred and thirty-eight thousand approximately in the affordable housing program, and in addition to that, eighty-eight thousand in program income. And that was for, to acquire six homes and to construct six homes. We also spent funding on the clearance and demolition program in partnership with the National Guard and park improvements to Bonham, which we'll see in partnership with the Parks Department. The street improvements that were undertaken during the year and completed with the help of our engineering department, of course, were off of the Rangeville Road. And that project alone benefited one thousand eighty-five people, of which eight hundred were low to moderate income. We were, had Bonham Park underway. We installed the playground equipment. We didn't have enough funding available, so we did partner with the Parks Department, and they were able to provide some of the funding. That park alone, once, and we also constructed the parking lot will benefit about six thousand people from in that area. We also demolished seventeen properties where there were twenty-nine unsafe structures. We paid for the removal of the debris with the National Guard. Our housing rehab program, if the home is in such a state of disrepair that we can't fix it up, we will demolish it and reconstruct on the lot. This is an example of two of the homes that we completed during this report here. The cost of the demolition and the construction of the home was sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So the total cost is about seventy thousand dollars. The majority of that will be a grant deferred either ten or five or fifteen years, depending on the, the homeowner's individual circumstances. These are the- These are the homes. One is on King, and one's on Orange Height. We also rehabbed a home for a family of six, sort of on the north side of town. And this is the inside of the home prior to, on the left side, of course, is before and then after the housing rehab, and then the bathroom. So during the report year, we spent two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars approximately. We have three that are waiting on the list to be assisted. It appears as if two of those are going to be reconstructed. We're fortunate to partner with the nonprofits in the area. Boys and Girls Club has always been one of our, our great partnerships. Traditionally, they reported serving about a thousand dollars, or a thousand youth per year, but due to the reporting requirements, a lot of the parents aren't returning the documentation, so we can only report what we can verify. So that's why there's only six hundred and fifty-one shown. Amigos de Valle, although they have a lot of different programs, the one that we support is the one with the home-delivered meals so that the elderly can remain in their home and independent, and they get a nutritional meal each day, in addition to the social activities. Sunshine Haven, we funded for nineteen thousand. Thirty terminal ill residents from Harlingen. Not, oh, no, they're not in Harlingen, it's Omito, but thirty Harlingen residents receive care at their twenty-four-hour facility. We also funded Family Crisis Center for six thousand dollars, where one hundred and eleven abused children were served. So although their services are traditionally for the mother, our program provides for services to the children of those domestic violence relationships. And then CASA, we funded, we also served one hundred and eleven children with fifteen thousand dollars. So when we're looking at leveraging, which we want to do, we don't want to just hand the money out, we want to leverage all the money that we can bring it back into the community. Over one point four million dollars were leveraged in the programs that we provided approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Wayne talked a little bit about vacant lots in Harlingen. This is one of the homes that were constructed by the city on a vacant lot on Southeast Street that we provided, we actually paid for the construction, down payment and closing costs. And the funds that came back when we sold the home, they went to the lender, so they got a loan for the fifty-eight thousand, so that went back in to be able to provide assistance to additional people. This is the other home that we did on Oklahoma, and they too got a loan from a local lender for seventy-six thousand dollars, and then they came in with two thousand dollars, and we gave them twenty-one thousand dollars in homebuyer assistance to make it affordable because they can't pay more than thirty percent of their income for the taxes and mortgage and insurance. So that's why you do the little bit of the buy-down to make sure that it's affordable. This is an existing home that the homeowner, we're provided with just down payment assistance that was for sale. During this report year, the two homes that the city constructed, we sold. We provided six people with down payment and closing cost assistance to existing homes, and Community Development Corporation of Brownsville has constructed six homes that are currently for sale to the public. At the end of the year, the, the graph shows where the, the bulk of the funding is, is available. And it, most of it is in the housing program, but as you can see by the costs that are involved in that, it's going to get absorbed rather quickly. And I have two board members that came out in this cold weather to support me, Mr. Morales and Mr. Lopez. Yay.
Stand up, please, we are ready to go. Thank you for your service to the Community Development, well, Black Grant Board, Community Development Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Tammy? All right. You know, this is one of those things that, you know, really, things that we really, I think, take for granted, you know, that doesn't get a lot of, this doesn't get a lot of attention. It's not going to be on the front page of the newspaper, but look at the tremendous amount of work that is being done by this department and this board to serve really people that need that kind of a service and, and in our community. So I just, I want to congratulate them and congratulate the work that they have, that they do every year to better our community and to better the lives and the citizens of our community. With that, there is a public hearing that is required. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the caper? Anyone like to make any comment? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and that will conclude that item. There's no action on the item. Item ten is a consideration and possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the modular shooting range from Austin, Texas Police Department. The Austin interim police chief, Brian Manley, has offered the shooting range to the Harlingen Police Department at no cost, and with the approval of the Austin mayor and city manager and city council.
You, you know people in Austin?
I do. Mayor, commissioner, city manager, thank you for considering this item, item ten. The Harlingen Police Department, we currently have no firing range of our own. We use, we go by on the good graces of some regional ranges, which is challenging, and it's one of the most important things we do, is keep the skills up of the men and women that, that protect our community because it is a perishable skill. The state requires only one time a year in qualifications, and we've elevated that standard to three times a year in our department because I think it's very, very important. That includes two live-fire sessions and one simulated firing session that is a scenario-based and decision-making model, not just accuracy. It also includes use of force training. As a, an interim to help support that, it takes a great deal of time for our folks to get a hundred and forty-three sworn positions out and a forty-five-minute to an hour round trip out and qualify and back three times a year as we try to keep our folks trained. So looking back, the chute trailer that's being offered to us by the city of Austin, I actually was involved in purchasing it when I was still there on a grant from the governor's office at a little less than a half million dollars. And it was purchased as an interim stopgap as we began our public safety training facility, about a twenty million dollar capital project, and I remembered where it was parked. So to, I reached out to Chief Brian Manley and asked him if it would be available as a transfer from that original grant, and he agreed with the approval of the city of Austin. It is a, a great piece of equipment that will be able to be utilized at our police department twenty-four hours a day. So day shift officers, evening shift officers, and night shift officers won't have to change their schedule to go qualify. They can do it right after show up and getting back on the street without impacting their presence in our community, keeping us safe. It's a high-end, government-grade piece of equipment. It's completely bulletproof, completely enclosed. It has a very high-end HVAC system that takes out all the, any concerns of gases or lead in the air, and has filters that take care of all that. And it is a live-fire trailer. It has the capability of shooting standard targets, and it also has a video scenarios group that you can run, decision-making processes that officers go up and have to face actual situations and make decisions. And it is live-fire. They shoot into the screen as the video's going. That screen has to be replaced about every ten thousand rounds, but other than that and filters, it's a fairly low-maintenance piece of equipment. It does have a diesel generator, but it also has a tether that we have power at the, at the police department that we can hook up to and avoid the generator. We can also share it with some of our local, smaller departments and help them out as well. So I would ask, ask mayor and commission to consider it an approval.
So moved?
Second.
All right. We have a motion, second to accept the modular shooting range in Austin. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Congratulations, chief. That's a, thank you for taking the initiative on that, and, and I think that's obviously a great, great piece of equipment for our, our community. Thank you to the city of Austin for sharing this, this great opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item eleven is a consideration, possible action, change or postpone the date of the Harlingen City Commission regular meeting December twentieth.
Mayor, commission, the holidays are here, and there's been one, one or two comments made about the meeting on the twentieth, and we can move it or postpone it. So I wanted to get your feedback on either one. We can move it to the thirteenth, which is next week, or postpone it altogether, and the next meeting would be January.
We're not, you won't have a forum?
No, it's just the holidays, and, and I'm not sure whether everybody was going to be here, so I thought I'd ask.
We did meet last year, right?
No. No, I think we moved it to January. I think we moved it.
Do we need?
I'm going to be out of town.
Yeah, but, that's a question.
You're going to be out of town.
But, but that's why I brought it up.
Is it pending? That we need to?
Okay. You're going to be out of town on the twentieth. I think commissioners are, it's going to be.
Yeah. I'll be in, yeah, I might be in Austin.
If we need something, you can always have a special. At this point, we have nothing.
We can always call a special meeting.
Yeah.
The reason we loaded up this agenda, we thought, just in case, we cancel the twentieth. But if we need a special meeting for some reason, we can have it next week.
Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
Postpone to January.
Postpone to January.
Okay. Motion to postpone.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. As wisher, yeah, says, if we need a, if we need a meeting for something, we'll call a special meeting. All right. Thank you. Item twelve is consideration and possible action to approve a resolution, amending the resolution number R twenty-seventeen dash one that created the downtown public improvement district as a public improvement district under chapter three seventy-two. Okay?
Mayor, commission, city manager. The city commission approved resolution R twenty-seventeen dash one on January the eighteenth of this year. That, that resolution created the DID as, as it exists today. On October ninth of twenty-seventeen of this year, the DID board of directors voted to amend the boundaries. There is a map of the, of the newly proposed boundaries in your packet. It essentially covers a three-block area. And so we're bringing that to the council for consideration for today. Now, I'd like to go over some of the requirements. Anytime you amend the boundary, there are two requirements that you have to meet according to state statute. One is the, you have to have fifty percent of the appraised value represented on the board. If that were the only criteria, then we'd be set because the DID as it exists now has a lot of value. So the newly annexed area into the district would be okay. However, that's not the only requirement. The other requirement is that we represent at least fifty percent of the square footage in the newly annexed area. So with that, we're going to have to add memberships to the board. Now, the resolution as it exists today allows for us to have fifteen members. We currently have twelve. Those other three are only allowed to be appointed by the mayor. So what we're going to do is ask the mayor to appoint the two members tonight, and we're going to go over some of the process in just a minute. What we're doing is that one of the board members that exists now in the DID also has property on La Placita, so we're using that calculation for the square footage, and that's built abroad. With that, we still need over thirty, over thirty thousand square feet represented, so we're going to ask that the mayor appoint Jaime Ascendis to the board. He owns Ascendis Auto Repair and represents twenty-eight thousand square feet.
Rodriguez.
Jaime Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, Jaime Rodriguez, I'm sorry. And then Stephanie Tremboli, she represents Rockranny Grill. Now, we still need about two thousand square feet more on the board, so we'd like to come back at the next meeting with, with the, with the final laymate, if that's okay with the council. For that, we want to make sure that the people that we asked that you appoint in the board are, are willing to serve. These two have indicated that they would. They also signed the petition as well, so we would still be one member short, but they have to go through the clearing process through the city secretary's office. So by the time they're cleared, we would have that other member to present to the board. Also, in your packet is information on the percentages that were signed by the, by the representatives downtown, and they're all over sixty percent. So I would say we tried to get a hundred percent response, but we can't always do that because people are unavailable or just don't want to sign. But I think the percentages that we had to petition the board to get into the district were pretty high. So with that, we're asking for the city council to approve the resolution and include those two members that we requested to be on board as well.
Okay. Is there any questions for Gabe? Well, I know we have downtown board members here and representatives of the, of the down, of property owners of the downtown, and everybody's on board with changes that are, that are being proposed tonight.
Bill.
Hearing no dissent.
You can nod, Bill.
I can. All right. I see that, I see nods of the heads, so we're taking that as a, a yes. So is there a motion to adopt the resol, approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign. Thank you for all you folks do in downtown to make it.
Congratulations.
Great downtown for all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Consider, item thirteenth, consideration and possible action to make plan changes to the city of Harlingen 401A plan for two thousand and eighteen to add loan capabilities for participants in the plan. Okay?
One of the items that came up during the discussions with the unions was that they asked if there could be a provision in the, in the current 401A plan to allow for participants to actually borrow from the plan. Right now, if they want to have access to it, they have to, they have to resign or retire. And the idea is that we want to give them access to the plan without losing the people. So on October first of this year, the IAC Investment Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, the IAC voted to approve changes to the plan. Now, the plan is only available for those people that were hired after October first, twenty-seven, two thousand and seven, except for fire. They have their own pension plan. Now, the changes that were approved by the board include the following. One is that a loan has to be for a minimum of a thousand dollars. You can only borrow half of your value or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is less. And the loan must be repaid within five years unless it's for a down payment assistance for a first-time homebuyer, then you get up to fifteen years to repay the debt. The interest rate is two percent above prime. Right now, the prime is four point two five, but it'll fluctuate daily. And all the interest payments go back into the participant's account. There is one, maximum of one loan outstanding per participant, and the loans must be made by payroll deduction. Now, there could be some circumstances where payroll deductions may not be available. For instance, if the employee is, is out on sick leave and has no more vacation or sick leave, then there'd be no, no pay to deduct from. In that event, if there's a, a ninety-day period where a loan is not made, then it's considered distribution to the participant. And then should the employee leave the city of Harlingen, then the loan does not have to be paid immediately. So continue that, pay directly to the, to the company. So with those changes, the board made a motion to approve this, and we're recommending the city council do this as well.
How, who's going to administer the loan program?
TCG.
TCG.
Yes, they'll be made directly to them.
From what I could tell, typically, when companies allow people to borrow, because a lot of companies don't allow people to borrow, just like we didn't, they limit what they can use it for because obviously you don't want somebody to lose this retirement money on a frivolous expenditure. And so typically, to pay education expenses for the person, their spouse, or their family, to prevent eviction from your current home, to pay unreimbursed medical expenses, and to buy first-time residence. Those are the ones that they usually use. Did you all talk about that?
No, there, there wasn't any type of restriction placed on the, on the loan proceeds. And I think the reason for that was because, like I said, the unions wanted access to their, to their funding, and we thought this might be a good way to keep them on board without actually having to lose an officer for him just to have access to his funds.
One of the comments that had come up, had come up during the discussions with the union was that we had officers that were leaving to gain access to their funds, and there was another mechanism in place where they could borrow against those funds, maybe they would, they would stay. And so we thought if we could create that mechanism within the retirement system and limit the amount they could take, that would be a positive thing. The union itself was very receptive to that idea and thought we should move forward.
The union itself was very receptive to that idea, thought we should move forward with that, and that's what we were doing.
If I may speak on this, I, I know quite a bit about 401 law. What happens in America is, when this is put in, people take it as the piggy bank, and they borrow, they mortgage their future for the present. Economically, it's a horrible thing to do, but human nature being what it is, people do what they do. They can take money out to buy a duly, they can take money out to do anything they want, but they have to pay it back. If they don't pay it back, it's a taxable event. If they're under 59 and a half, they have to pay income taxes and a 10% penalty. Should they leave employment for whatever reason, and they don't pay it back that lump sum, then on leaving employment, it's fully taxable. And once again, if you're under 59 and a half, you pay income tax and a 10% penalty. In either case, if you're over 59 and a half, you pay income tax on it. So, somebody taking $10,000 out may or may not trigger an increase in their taxable rate, but somebody taking out 40, or 60, or $100,000 in reneging on the promise can jump them up from, say, 15% bracket to 25, or 35, or 38 and a half. But that's what's happening in America. I discourage people from ever doing this, however, I have no control over anybody's human nature.
And, Commissioner, we talked about it at the board meeting, we, we voiced a concern that it's not a good idea to borrow from your 401A, but it's a mechanism to actually keep from losing our police officers and allow them to-
I, I understand, I mean, God said to Eve, "Don't eat the apple," and Adam said, "Hey, let's do it." Yeah, I understand.
One question I have, you know, where my wife works, they have the typical 401K and everybody borrows. The, the, the plan that we had prior to this plan, does it allow to borrow the money for any reason at all?
TMRS now.
TMRS now.
You can borrow the money for any reason at all?
No, you can't borrow from TMRS.
You cannot borrow from TMRS?
No, you cannot borrow from TMRS, no. No, no. Now, just-
You may or may not get that money, depending on whether or not you retire. No, 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 I know, I'm just, I'm trying to compare apples to apples, because-
TMRS, it isn't, the city's contribution is technically like yours until after 20 years of service.
Okay.
So, if you try to do something, and you leave in between there, that money does not go with you.
Okay.
Only your contribution is yours.
Okay.
So, that's why, if, there's several reasons why it's not allowed.
The, the prior plan had no loan in it, so this would be something new for us?
Yes.
That's what my real question is, is this something new for us?
For, for pension plans, yes. Now, we do offer additional 401A retirement plans for the city, we have three. Those, there is no city contribution to those, just employee contributions, but those you can borrow from. But that's, but that's, that's not mandatory, that's just voluntary.
Right, but if I was on the voluntary 401K, I could borrow against it for-
Yes, yes.
For vote?
Yes, for whatever you want, up, up to-
I just want to clarify where we're at, because I know where my wife works, I'll reiterate what Commissioner Mesmar said, I, I see so many people that work there that my wife gets to retire in 10 days, she, she gets to go home, but I see so many people that she works with that'll never get to go home, and so, you know, I, I understand, we, we, human nature, it's just a position that we have to take personally.
Any questions? Just so that I'm clear. When, right now, currently, Dan, and I'm, or maybe you can answer that, when somebody leaves and they take their money with them, do we have matching funds that go with that, that cost us money?
Yes, and the TCG plan, they are fully vested day one.
Right, so when that, when they leave, that money goes out of that account?
Both cities and there.
So, by allowing this to happen, it would help to keep that money in the account, keeps employees employed, right?
Well-
Well, they're leaving to access it.
Right, no, what I'm saying, but if they have access, I mean-
Yes, yes, that's the intent, the intent that-
I have plenty of children.
The comment we received back from the union was that we had officers leaving to gain access to those funds, where they normally wouldn't have access, we don't have this component-
And my point is that that costs us money, it's not like when they, when they pull the funds, we have, we have funds dedicated to them that we weren't gonna pay out for another 10 years, or whatever, they can-
Well, the money is there, and it's their money, so it doesn't cost us anything, they're just taking what we've contributed over time, that they can do anything they want with, if they want to pay the penalty on it and the tax, it's theirs, so it doesn't cost us one penny if they decide to take their money. Thank you.
Our match is made, their match is made.
That's the difference between the TCG plan and TMRS is, it's immediately in the TCG plan, once the check leaves here every month and it goes into your account, it's your money. And in the TMRS plan, only your contribution is your money, not the whole contribution, not the city's part. If you leave early, you don't get the city part. Okay, I just want to make it real clear. Under the current plan, that money is mine, no matter what, it doesn't cost the city anything, the city's already expensed it. And all we're allowing them to do is that if somebody needs access to that money, they don't have to quit the city to get it. They can borrow the money, they can pay it back, and everybody is whole, and if they happen to leave, they're, they can only borrow enough that if they decide to, you know, something happens, they get separated, the money gets paid back. They're borrowing from themselves. I go to the bank and I say, "Bank, I have $50,000, can I borrow 20 of it?" When you say it. And then the interest they pay back goes back to their, nobody gets that interest, that's not a bank that's making the money, they're paying themselves back the interest.
Right, that's correct.
Except that when they leave, they really don't pay it back, they just have a taxable event that occurs to them, but they don't pay it back, where it's income now and a penalty and tax.
But, but my point is, the city is not gonna, we're not holding the bag for, we're not making the loan out of the city, they're making the loan out from their, their own money, and we're just allowing them to do that.
That's correct.
I have a couple of observations to make, and I think this has been a good discussion, I appreciate everybody's input on this. There have been a bunch, there have been some numbers thrown, thrown out about vacancies or people leaving the department, the police department, which are, which have been inaccurate numbers, those numbers are not accurate. And if you look at the real numbers, they're, they're much lower than what people were, some people were saying and what was being reported in the news. The other observation is, is that we've had this in place since 2007.
Yes, 2007.
So, 10 years, and, and, you know, there hasn't been a big demand to, to change this, and I know, and I know that during that 10-year period, because I've looked at the, I've looked at the attrition numbers, there haven't been a lot of people, there hasn't been a lot of turnover in the, with the HPD. So, would any of the commissioners be willing to go to, say, one committee meeting, like Commissioner Hillmore, Commissioner Mesmar, would y'all be willing to go to one meeting and just look at this with the staff and go over all the rationale for whether or not you want to do this, or, and then come back with a recommendation, or are you all, are you all satisfied that you know what you want to do, that you don't want to do it?
I'll speak again, I have 401Ks, I have companies with 401Ks in the Rio Grande Valley, and logic never overcomes emotion, and you cannot counter human nature.
Okay, all right.
They can take the money if they want it, if they want to pay the tax and the penalty can't. They can just take it out.
It'll be a 10%?
Right.
Yeah, penalty.
No, this would be a loan they could take-
No, but if, but if they wanted to, if we didn't allow them to take the loan, they could always-
Not, not as long as you're employed.
No, they'd have to quit, they'd have to quit.
You, you would have to quit.
And then they'd, they'd have to petition-
And under IRS rules, you could only take out X percent of the assets in the account, and then the third-party administrator, the administrator of the funds determines how much you can take out and what your pay schedule, your payback schedule is, and it's taken out of your future paychecks to pay that money back. And then there's no taxable event as long as you pay that money back.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether anybody wants any more information on this, whether they want to table this, or whether you, you all ready to make a decision?
Well, I have a que, I mean, how long has this been going, has this, did this just come up? You've been talking about this for a while and gone to, and this is what they want? I mean, this is-
Remember, we, we talked about it during the collective bargaining discussion, this is one of the things they, they brought to the table, and they discussed on several occasions, and I had discussed that with the City Council, and it was something that we could possibly do, in addition to that, one more component that we could do, that was an annuity component that we're, we're looking at as well.
And are you recommending it, the staff's recommending it?
Well, the IAC board approved it, so we're recommending that the City Council approve as well.
We actually have a board that reviews-
The, the IAC is a pension board that oversees the, this particular investment.
Mayor, unless you feel that there's something that we're not seeing, that from that board, this, this is coming from that board?
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is opposite, I'm hearing at least some opposition to do it, and I'm hearing the staff-
Okay.
-recommending it, I'm also hearing a rationale that they want it because people are leaving to get it, and I, I'm not sure, that hasn't been quantified for me, nobody's given me a report that says, you know, 15 people left because they want to take their retirement out. I, you know, as opposed to three people left because they want to take their retirement out, I don't know what it is. I also don't know, I mean, I, I think this is a response to some, some, you know, the earlier negotiation, but is it really something that, is it really something that they want? Is it really something that will, will enhance the, you know, the benefits? So, I've got, you know, I'm hearing some commissioners saying, "I don't, I don't think we want to do this." I've got the staff saying they want, they want to do it, and I'm hearing, the, the third thing, and that is, if we're gonna let them do it, they are restricted to certain types, certain, certain types of things that they could out for.
You, you cannot restrict it by law, you cannot restrict it by law.
Oh, I don't know, I, I don't know what I, okay. Well, he says you can't, but you say you can't, so I don't know.
I have multiple securities licenses.
Okay.
The, the thing, the thing is-
So, so, the only, I'm just saying, do you want, does anybody want more information?
I, I- If you want more information, that's, that's somebody who's to take, make a motion, table this, I don't think there's any urgency to, to take this action, I don't know that we need to do it.
What I would like to say is, this costs the city nothing, and it gives the employees economic freedom, whether they use that freedom wisely or not, it is not of our concern.
Okay, well, then, you're not, but, what's, what are the wishes of the Commission?
I would, I would like to take a vote.
Okay, somebody make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve, does this resolution need to be met, be read by the attorney?
No, it just, if, if there's going to be a motion to approve it, all it needs is a second and a vote and, and-
Okay, on item 13, I'll make the motion to accept what has been presented.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. All right, thank you. Next item is our 14th appointment, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I have none.
All right, no board appointments?
Mayor, in light of the way that the item 12 is written, was limited to an action item to approve a resolution to expand the district boundaries, and I heard Assistant City Manager Rivas also make the recommendation about doing board appointments there, that, that item is listed here under, under this item, so if this, I would recommend that the Commission consider his board appointment recommendations under this item, since it was not a part of the resolution.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the board appointments? Is there a motion that were made, or the recommendations for the downtown improvement district board? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. All right, then item 15 is the executive session, under eight percent of chapter 551, subchapter D, the PCA, Cameron Coats, sections 551, 08, 7, 07, 1, 07, 2, and 09, 7, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial and financial information, the city has received with business prospect, locate, stay, or expand with the city, negotiations or other incentives of ULA, and also regarding commercial and financial information with this prospect, known as Project Waterside, to obtain legal advice and to consult the city attorney connection with the MPO Merck, is there a motion to go at the executive, to executive session?
Someone move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we are in executive session, and ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be in the conference room to talk with our lawyer and to talk about economic development matters, there could be an action item when we return. All right, we're out of executive session.
7:32.
7:32. So, need to go to item-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You go to 16, consideration of possible action on Project Waterside, discussing executive session, is there a motion to authorize the City Manager to proceed as discussing executive session with regard to Project Waterside?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 17, nobody signed up for civic, civic communication, so we are adjourned.